Good evening, everyone. Today is the first day of September 2020. The time is 6:30. We'd like to begin this city council meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd rise and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Assistant City Clerk, if you'd do a roll call.
Harrington.
Here.
McKinney, absent. O'Doherty.
Here.
Pierce.
Here.
Shuster.
Here.
Stalder.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Gabriel.
Here.
Shumway.
Here.
That's eight present and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. Our next item is the public comment period on non-agenda items. We have set aside 30 minutes for this, and we have four individuals that will start with that have been randomized, and we're going to have the city clerk call upon them. And then after we've gone through those four names, then we will invite others to make comment, both in the council chambers and also on Zoom. We want to remind everyone that you'll be given three minutes. The three minutes when that expires, we'll let you know, and then we'll go on to the next person. So, City Clerk, if you would invite the first person to make public comment.
Caleb Hein.
Good evening.
Welcome, Caleb.
All right. So, tonight I just wanted to mention something that I'd seen on Facebook, and I thought it was really cool. So, this is kind of a public comment time, and it's more of an encouragement, again, to the community. I saw, I want to give kind of a big shout out to everyone who's been donating those little baskets and little care packages to the fire department and the police department, the sheriff's department. I think that's really great, and those officers need to know that we really do appreciate them. And I just, I think that's one of the coolest things. We couldn't be more blessed to have men and women like that serve in our community. And so, just want to give a shout out like that. I think, I think the police and law and order is one of the things that we have to look at when we're thinking about the very sign behind you there, building our community through respect, integrity, teamwork, and stewardship. This is, it, it all comes down to enforcing that. So, it's really cool. I, I stand by them, and I think it's really cool. So, community, keep it up. They need it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hein. City Clerk?
Sam Miller.
He's not in chambers, is he, on Zoom?
I don't see his name. I'll call it one more time. Sam Miller?
Okay, let's go to the next, next name.
Dr. Julio Boreanez.
Boreanez.
Welcome, Doctor.
Good evening, and hello, Mayor Shumway and this respective council. I am Dr. Julio Boreanez, a licensed psychologist and resident of Laramie, residing within the 82070 zip code. As it may be known, mental health crises is not the primary mandate of police, yet police officers are often frontline responders to mental health emergencies in the community. I am here to request and suggest implementing a full-time mobile crisis position like the co-responder model used by the Fort Collins Police Department. The job and model involve teams of mental health professionals, such as psychiatric nurses or psychologists, and police officers trained to respond to calls involving a mental health crisis. I spoke with a staff person with Fort Collins Police, and the budget allotted for a full-time clinician is $62,000 plus benefits per clinician. Modeling other existing programs, the clinician could be an active liaison between Iverson Memorial Hospital, the local police department, and in doing so, the responder would not be employed by LPD, thereby reducing their responsibility. However, this person may reside within the LPD offices in Laramie. Supervising agencies potentially would be the City of Laramie, Iverson Memorial Hospital, and LPD. Additionally, each agency may split one to three full-time clinicians' costs. Findings show that these programs can be cost-effective and can reduce the burden on the criminal justice system and officer time on the scene. Thank you, and I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Okay, let's start with council chambers. Is there anyone in council chambers that would like to make public comment at this time? If you'd please come forward, and if you'd start with your name, and then you'll have three minutes.
Hello, my name is John Shapley, a taxpaying citizen of Laramie. I'd like to speak tonight about the failure of our city government to recognize the issues caused by our particular form of government. City manager commission studies about various things, wasting taxpayer dollars. Then the city management uses those as justification to bring things before the council. The council goes along with it because the study says it's a good idea. Then, when it's voted into place, the city management can absolve themselves of any responsibility. So, like as seen by last week's council meeting, a study was commissioned to inform city management about the Casper aquifer. Interestingly enough, the Casper aquifer is overflowing, yet a great portion of the city is being given treated water mixed with the Casper aquifer. Why? Is it so that the city can justify the exorbitant water bill? Is it so that the city can justify the exorbitant sewage bill? Is it so that city management can justify bloated paychecks? I'd like to see a study, too, an independent audit of how city finances are being used by the city management. Let's make certain our money is being used wisely. Let's create a citizens' financial oversight board so that we can verify we're getting our best tax dollar investment and not just feeding a few overinflated salaries. Maybe we'll find enough money to assist the salaries of our deserving city employees. I yield my time.
Thank you, Mr. Shapley. Anyone else in the council chambers? Okay, would you go to the people that are on the phone, and we'll invite them to speak next. Anyone want to speak that's on the Zoom call that we have going on?
May I speak?
Yes, go ahead.
First, yes. First of all, I'd like to apologize if this is choppy. My internet connection isn't the best. I'd also like to express my profound disappointment in city councils' apparent eagerness to ignore the issues brought to them by the community. For several weeks now, multiple people have come to this council, both in person and on Zoom, as I am doing now, to express concerns with the ways in which a lot of the city government is being handled, including funding. And in particular, I know that you're aware of the concerns brought forward to you regarding the Laramie Police Department. The motion put forward to establish this citizen oversight board has been stalled and delayed multiple times in its supposed process. And recently, there has been a motion to what appears to be silence the voices of people attempting to criticize the city government in this randomized public speaking lottery. And it just sends a message that the voices of the community are more of a nuisance than an actual opportunity for the community to speak with their government and request relevant action. With that, I will yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Taylor. Anyone else like to make public comments?
I see no one else unmuting, Mayor.
You can unmute by hitting star six. And if you do, we'll see you're unmuted and invite you to speak. All right. Seeing no other one indicating they'd like to make public comments, we'll close this public comment period. There will be another at the end of the meeting in which we will take everyone that wants to make comments at that time. We'll now ask the Vice Mayor if he would take us through the considerations of changes in the agenda and setting the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move that the following changes to the agenda be approved to add a topic to the executive session regarding litigation, Wyoming Statute 16-4-405, small a, Roman numeral three.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Councilor Shuster. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
I would move, Mayor, that the agenda be set as changed.
It's been moved and seconded by Councilor O'Doherty. All in favor of having this, this agenda be set, indicate by saying aye.
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 Okay. We have a proclamation that I would like to read at this time. The proclamation goes, whereas addressing the food insecurity needs of children, youth, men, women, seniors, active military, and veterans today is fundamental for the future of Laramie, Wyoming, and whereas hunger and poverty are issues of vital concern in Albany County, where 12.9% of people struggle with hunger, and one in every six children do not know where their next meal will come from, and whereas the need for comprehensive coordinated emergency food programs place upon our community a critical responsibility, and whereas the City of Laramie is committed to combating hunger in every part of our community and providing additional resources to those in need, and whereas it is our responsibility as citizens of the City of Laramie to learn about hunger and to do our part in reducing that hunger, and whereas City of Laramie partners with Wyoming Food Bank of the Rockies, a member of the Feeding America nationwide network of food banks, and their local partners, Laramie Soup Kitchen and Interfaith Good Samaritan, to educate people about the important role of hunger relief organizations, raising awareness for the need to devote more resources and attention to hunger and food insecurity issues. And whereas more than 4,920 residents of Albany County rely annually on food provided by Wyoming Food Bank of the Rockies and their local partners, and whereas Wyoming Food Bank of the Rockies, its generous funders, volunteers, and local partner agencies are committed to educating citizens on the role of food banks and hunger relief efforts in solving hunger. And whereas Wyoming Food Bank of the Rockies provides over 12 million meals across Wyoming annually, and to engage each of us to help end hunger. One meal at a time, either through donations, social media shares, or volunteer shifts, and whereas the month of September is designated Hunger Action Month in order to bring attention to the food insecurity in our communities. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Joe Shumway, Mayor and President of the Laramie City Council, Laramie, Wyoming, do hereby proclaim September 2020 as Hunger Action Month and encourage all citizens to increase their understanding and awareness of food insecurity and how it impacts our nation, state, county, and communities. Given under my hand and seal of the Laramie, Wyoming, to be affixed this first day of September 2020, and I have signed this. And I'd like to present this proclamation to Victoria Zaiton. And she, if you'll come forward, and if you want to make some comments first, we'd like you to do that. And then we want to have you join us up here. We're going to take a picture.
That'd be great.
With you with this proclamation. So, Victoria, welcome, and thank you for all you do, and go ahead.
Thank you so much, Mayor, and council members. We really appreciate the dedication that the citizens of Albany County and the City of Laramie have towards helping their, their neighbors. While it is true that one in six children were identified as food insecure just at the beginning of 2020, since the COVID crisis, that estimate has now been one in four. We are hoping that through this Hunger Action Awareness Month that all of us will encourage anyone who has a need reaches out to one of the local partners here in your community to get healthy, sustainable food. Want to make certain that everyone gets through any food insecure crisis, and only you can help make that happen by helping stop the angst that anyone who is food insecure has and by supporting those partners in the area who make certain that there's healthy food for your neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. And if you'd come forward, I'd like to present this to you. Would you be willing to join us in having a picture?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you for all you do. And shake your hands, but we don't do that these days.
No, no, we got it. We have to do it.
They're very smiling.
Smile with your eyes.
We are.
Thank you. So very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Assistant City Manager, do we have any announcements today?
Um, Mayor, we do have one announcement from the Assistant City Manager. I believe he's on Zoom.
Mr. Pizer, go ahead.
Nope, he's not.
In person.
Magically appeared.
Do you want to bring up that? Honorable Mayor, City Council, I'm here to give you a quick update on the census activities. As you may or may not have seen, we have enumerators out in the community, and they are making six visits to each home that hasn't been counted. After those six visits, then they'll do a, what they call is a proxy placement of people that are in place. But what I wanted to show you tonight is the census response rates by track that Mr. Horder brought up last time he was here presented. As you can see, we've got about a 49.7% response rate, which includes the West Side and kind of over to I-80. And then if you see, we also have a 33% response rate, which is at the University of Wyoming. I'm going to tackle those two areas. That 33% response rate, which kind of encompasses the University of Wyoming, has been aided in that they were able to do a group quarters count before the students were sent home for the COVID-19 emergency. So, that, that group quarters response rate doesn't show up in the responses. So, that's why it shows so low, although we do believe we have a significantly better count rate in that area. The 49, 49.7% response rate, our counter to that is we're going to take all of our census banners and try to move them about into the area, use the Harney Viaduct, use Optimus Park, and use some areas to encourage those folks to participate in the census. We're also moving some of our little political signs that you may have seen around to try to encourage more response rates in those areas. The final piece of the puzzle that just came out yesterday is we're trying to find a 501(c)(3) that might be interested in applying for a $1,000 grant from the lower foundation that is used to help and potentially do something to host an event to try to encourage folks in that area, in those low response rate areas, to participate in the census. I just wanted to give you a quick update on what we're doing and how we're trying to get the census counts as accurate as we can to help Laramie for the next 10 years. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on the census? Thank you, Mr. Pizer.
Thank you.
Are there any disclosures by anyone in the city council on any item that's on the consent or the regular agenda? On the complex of interest? Okay, seeing that, we'll go back to the Vice Mayor for the approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move that the consent agenda be approved, that each specific action on the consent agenda be approved as indicated.
Second.
Okay, that motion has been made and seconded by Councilor Shuster. Ask the City Clerk to do a roll call on the approval of the consent agenda.
Harrington.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
O'Doherty.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Shuster.
Yes.
Stalder.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor.
Thank you, City Clerk. So, the consent agenda has been approved. We'll now move on to the regular agenda. The first item on the regular agenda is item number 10. Ask Councilor Shuster to introduce that to us.
Item number 11, original ordinance number 2011, amending various sections of Title 8 and Title 12 of the Laramie Municipal Code regarding nuisance regulation and snow removal regulations. I move to approve Original Ordinance Number 2011 on third and final reading based on findings of facts, conclusions of law, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the ordinance.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded by Councilor O'Doherty. This is our third reading. Do we have anyone that wants to bring us up?
Mayor and council on...
Go ahead.
This is third reading, as you noted. I would, the, from second reading, there's been no changes. During the first reading, two changes were made. Those were reflected in the second reading. And so, with that, I really have nothing further to present and would be happy to take any questions if you have them.
Questions from the council? Councilor Stalder?
I have a comment. I didn't know if there was a comment.
Let's do comments after we go with the public. Any questions from the council? Any questions from the public? Or comments from the public? Any, anything that the public wants to... Make comments on regarding this item?
I see no one, Your Honor.
Okay, now, Councilor Stalder, go ahead with your comment.
Thank you. For the first two readings, we've probably spent over an hour, if not more, talking about the snow removal. And, I mean, it seems like from the comments and questions last time, we're talking about less than 20 people, you know, a couple thousand dollars to do this. And it just seems like we're spending a ton of time on issues like this. We've had public commenters here tonight, you know, talking from kind of completely different arguments about how we're spending our money. And I think about how much time we've spent on snow removal, you know, moving it a couple hours, one way or the other. And, I don't know, I just, I hope we can be better stewards of our time. A couple of weeks ago, we had a special meeting because we had all these agenda items that we just can't get to because we're spending so much time on talking about snow removal, moving the time for an hour for a pretty minimal amount of money. But during that special meeting, we were here, we were getting paid. The camera guy was getting paid, staff is getting paid. I would imagine we probably spent as much money on the special meeting as we're going to spend, or recoup, or save, or whatever, on snow removal. And I just, I would just encourage us to make good decisions about what we're spending our time on. We've got all these people here talking about how we spend our money. But our time is money. And that's my only comment. We just spend a lot of time, so I won't spend any more time talking about it.
All right, appreciate that. Thank you for your comment. Councilor O'Doherty?
We're spending time on snow removal, I am, because ice is a hazard, and we can, a lot of people can get hurt. And so, that's why we're spending the time. I don't think it's about a couple thousand dollars. I think it's about safety of our citizens.
Any other comments from council? Do we have a roll call on this item?
O'Doherty.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Stalder, no. Weaver.
No.
Harrington.
Yes.
McKinney.
No.
Shuster.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's six yeses and three nos, Your Honor.
Okay, item number 11 passes, and we'll now go to item number 12. That's also Councilor Shuster.
Thank you. Title of this is Original Ordinance Number 2016, amending various sections of Title 15.8 and 15.14 of the Laramie Municipal Code Regarding Downtown Commercial Zoning District Regulations. I move to approve Original Ordinance Number 2016 as recommended by the Planning Commission on Third and Final Reading in accordance with findings of facts, conclusions of law, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Councilor Pierce. Again, this is the third reading on this ordinance. And, Matt, are you introducing this?
Honorable Mayor, Council, yes, I'll just run quickly through it. Nothing has changed since the second. We are only bringing forth, again, the patio design updates as well as increased protruding signage size, and then also not allowing temporary commercial banners downtown. If you have any questions, I am happy to answer them.
Okay, any questions for our staff? Any questions for, or comments, concerns from the public?
I see none, Your Honor.
Any comments from the council before we vote? Do we have a roll call?
Weaver.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
McKinney.
No.
O'Doherty.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Stalder, no. Shuster.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's seven yeses and two nos, Your Honor.
All right, item 12 passes. We'll go to item number 13, and that is Councilor Pierce.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution 2020-55, authorizing a transfer of funds from the Economic Development Fund Daycare in the amount of $86,000 to Laramie Interfaith to establish a grant partnership for resident COVID-19 relief and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
That motion has been seconded by Councilor O'Doherty. Malia Brown, our chief operating officer, is here to introduce this to us.
Good, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. I just wanted to remind you that back on July 22nd, we, we did an application to the state to try to get some CARES Act funding for Interfaith. The application was denied. At the time, I think the State Loan and Investment Board did not want to have partnerships with the, with any of, that I saw. Jackson had an application also, and they wanted us to go through the state. They do have some state funding for rental relief. And so, we, staff came together and thought that maybe transferring this $86,000 from the Economic Development Fund, we could still help our citizens in having grants and having Interfaith help the people who, with some of the assistance with utilities and, and medical and whatever else they would need. Tonight, I do have Sarah Reese here, and I believe that we were going to have Michelle Holmes from Interfaith and Trish Nichols, who's the acting interim. If you have any questions for anyone, we'd be happy to, to answer anything for, from you.
Okay, any, any questions for any of those individuals? Michelle Holmes is the president of the Board of Directors for Interfaith. Trish Nichols is the interim. She started last week, but I think her first day was today officially. And, or, for Malia. Yes, Councilor Weaver. Councilor Weaver, go ahead.
I'm wondering, are these funds, if... I'm wondering, are these funds, if approved, going to be used to bolster existing relief, um, efforts that already exist within Interfaith and simply support current programs? Or are these funds going to be used for a specific type of, uh, financial assistance for individuals and families? And if so, what are the requirements for being eligible for these funds?
I'm gonna let Sarah answer that question, or someone from Interfaith.
Sarah Reese, go ahead. She's still muted.
Sarah, if you hit star six, it will unmute your phone.
Well, we're waiting for that. I, I serve on the board of Interfaith, and I'll try to answer that question. These funds, uh, if made available, would go before a review board. That's what they call it, a review board. And they take current applications from individuals throughout the community who have, uh, financial and otherwise concerns over utilities, uh, rent, and, and a vast, uh, number of things. They determine how these funds will be spent, and then it's approved by the, uh, that group. And if it exceeds a certain dollar amount, then it goes to the Board of Directors at Interfaith, and they either, uh, make adjustments or approve it, or else ask them to, to reconsider. Uh, I will say this, um, their, Interfaith has been overwhelmed during this period of time as have many businesses and other individuals. And so that, you know, there's a great need there. As far as I understand, the way this is written, this will not go to pay salaries, but it'll go to pay needs of individuals that come and apply, uh, for specific needs that they have individually. And they have, you know, I think that they, you know, they don't have the resources right now to, to pay for all those that come in and have requests, but they try to meet as many as they can. And with others, they use education and look for other, other partners to, to help, uh, achieve what they can. One, one thing that, uh, I think all of you know is Interfaith is very well-known throughout the community for being very much involved with individuals. Uh, I wish, you know, I will support this. I, I wish that the funds would, would come, uh, more directly than indirectly to us, uh, and because, but I do know this, the city does have, uh, you know, a very vested interest in making sure that we do all we can to support individuals throughout the community, especially in crisis, to, to give them the opportunity to, to get through this difficult time that we're all, involved in right now. So, anyway, did that answer your question, Councilor Weaver, or do you have more?
Sarah's is up now.
Details? Okay, Sarah, you, I see you're unmuted. I hope I didn't say anything that would, you would, uh, not want me to say, so go ahead. Sarah Reese, do you want to make comment?
Mayor, if, if she's having issues, I will comment. So, one, one of the, the things I think, uh, we wanted to say is that Interfaith does, uh, go look at other funding sources before they would use this funding source. So, you know, especially this, the, the rent at the state, if there's people who ha- who qualify for that program, uh, Interfaith goes and looks at all of their funding sources. This would be the last funding source. And we will have a memorandum of understanding with, uh, Interfaith to kind of put the guidelines and try to ma- make sure that everything's in place that we need, uh, from a reporting standpoint. I think their social workers are, um, they've been doing this for a long time. They know how, you know, they require financials, it require a lot of things from the applicants, and, um, they really look through to what their needs are. So hopefully, this program will help the community.
They, they have hundreds of volunteers, but their staff consists of six individuals. They are the review board that goes through this within the limits. And, and I think that's indicated here in what we have, that they use all the possible resources they can before they rely upon this money. And, uh, city manager?
Mayor, I just wanted to clarify. I believe the funding will be put into, to answer Councilor Weaver's question, existing Interfaith programs, which we've all sort of danced around but didn't address directly. There's also in your cover sheet packet materials, council, there's an extensive discussion there, about that long, of, um, the processes that Interfaith uses. And I think that is probably a lot of what Sarah would have gone over. So feel free to reference there, uh, for a lot of detail. And, and we'd be happy to read it into the record if it's helpful as well.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilor Stalder?
I was just wondering what the balance in the Economic Development Fund is and where we came up with $86,000.
Uh, we came up with $86,000 because it was, uh, restricted for daycare that we have not used for five years. So we thought that money was, since it's restricted, and if daycares wanted to apply, they could go do the grant and loan program that's already happening right now. So we felt that money was not being utilized. Um, we have over a million dollars, I think, in recapture monies, uh, at this point still. So, uh, it's not depleting the fund, it's not, um, doing whatever. And it was just sitting there because council had restricted it. So we thought this would, might be a good thing that council would want to do.
Thank you.
Is it?
Thank you.
So tonight, if should we vote for this, that will be something where the council gives direction for the use of that funding we received. Any other questions? Anything from the public on this item? Questions, comments? Concerns? Any comments from the council? Councilor O'Doherty?
I just want to commend staff that I know is very careful with our budget and very transparent. And I appreciate that you found, um, a, a way to, to help this fund that we were disappointed that we weren't able to dance, uh, through CARES Act. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilor Harrington?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just wanted to, uh, sort of hop on with Councilor O'Doherty there. Um, I, I think this was a smart decision. I plan to support it, um, by staff. I think early in the pandemic, we all saw how truly reliant our community is on specifically Interfaith, um, but several other of our partner organizations. And, and I think taking this money from a reserved account in the, the city and, and giving it to Interfaith, I think, is a, a smart decision because it puts it into the hands of people in our community who desperately need this, who are being kept up at night by these, uh, these amounts of money. So I, I commend staff for, um, for thinking of alternative options when the funding was denied from the state. So I just wanted to acknowledge them. Um, and that is all. Thank you.
Councilor Pierce?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just want to agree with Councilors O'Doherty and Harrington. This is, this is a, a good effort, a good, good thing that we're doing. And, and I know it will be vanity, and if we were really flush, you know, we could, we could add to that. But sadly, we're not that flush. So, so this is just a little grain of sand.
Any other comments from council? Roll call?
Stalder?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
O'Doherty?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero noes, Your Honor.
Item passes. Now we move to item number 14, which is Councilor Harrington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that city council approve resolution 2020-56, extending the rules for an open container area in the downtown district and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Councilor Schuster. Assistant city manager Beazer, introduce this.
Honorable Mayor, city council, what you have before you is a resolution extending the open container, uh, dates from September 7th through September 30th. Um, the intent for, the intent for staff through this was to have it match up with the resolution that supports the Hollyhock Commons through September 30th. Um, to date, I've, uh, queried with Chief Stalder numerous times. He's indicated that they've had no incidences directly related to the open container area. We've also had LMSA conduct a consumer survey, um, not sure if Trey made it on the line yet, um, conduct a consumer survey that was shared with you today through Chantel Anderson that provided some, some support and some neutrality related to the open container area. Uh, with that being said, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council? Any questions, comments, concerns from the public?
Brett Glass?
Mr. Glass?
Honorable Mayor, members of council, I hope you can hear me okay. Um, hopefully, I'm unmuted. Um, anyway, um, I am, uh, I'd like to ask that you not renew this. Um, behind me, in my background, you can see a picture of a typical crowd which I took, uh, whi- which I took in the downtown First Street Plaza, um, showing people, uh, carrying drinks. Many of them were carrying multiple drinks. And as you probably know, uh, when, uh, it, it only takes two drinks within an hour for someone to become too drunk to drive. Uh, but people were going into the bars, and what we, what we observed when we were down there was they were going into the bars, buying multiple drinks, taking them out. And then before they got warm, which means well within an hour, they were consuming them, and then they were leaving and driving home. We saw some people with more than two of them lined up in front of them. Um, and we were very concerned about this because maybe they weren't, uh, hopefully they didn't cause any accidents, hopefully they didn't cause any problems. But people seemed to be drinking downtown and, and potentially driving home intoxicated. Um, we have seen, especially since the students have returned, uh, more noise, more problems, more vandalism. Um, it really doesn't help to encourage people to, to, to drink. It doesn't help the bars either because, in fact, uh, you know, the, these people might, might actually, rather, rather than, you know, rather than buying a couple of drinks and departing, might, might buy food, might do other things which, uh, enhance the bars business as well. Um, so in general, this has not been good for downtown, and, uh, especially downtown residents have, have been concerned about it. Um, while it has been claimed that a survey has been done, I certainly did not get a survey, and nobody who I asked, uh, was surveyed. As usual, this seems to be a case of, uh, very selective polling on the part of Laramie Main Street, uh, which seems to be promoting its own agendas, um, against the best interests of downtown. So, uh, all told, I'd like to ask that you not approve this extension. I don't think that, uh, I don't think that the idea of having open containers downtown to do anything, did anything good for us. And it's potentially causing some problems. I'd hate to see someone actually hurt as a result. So, uh, anyway, that's about all the time I have. So, again, I'd like to ask you to vote against extending this. Thank you.
Mr. Glass, anyone else in the public?
It's all the hands I see, Your Honor.
Okay, any comments from the council before we take a vote? Councilor Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When we originally considered this, there was a lot of discussion. And there was some reluctance to, to move forward with it, and we heard similar concerns as those that were just expressed. But I think we also heard from our assistant city manager that, for the most part, this has been, uh, a outdoor opportunity that, that hasn't been problematic. And as a result, I feel comfortable with, with the extension. But I, I, I do wonder if extending it through the 30th is really we want, really the way we want this worded? Because wouldn't the final day be the, um, we're doing it, we're doing it Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, i- if that's correct? So wouldn't we want to actually have the, the extension be the last, um, the last day in which you would normally have the, uh, the program?
Honorable Mayor, through you, um, we could certainly amend it to say September 26th, so it matches up with the last day of the, uh, resolution, if you want to make that amendment. Uh, to me, I think it's kind of a move point as we just matched it up with the dates of the Hollyhock Commons, and that's, we're planning on taking the Hollyhock Commons down on October 1st, provided not, we're not under 14 inches of snow at that point. So...
You want?
But I think regardless, uh, Honorable Mayor, through you, regardless the rules don't allow it to occur across that time, um, I don't know that amendments required to make, to make it make sense.
All right, unless there's an amendment, we'll just move forward with that explanation. Councilor Stalder, did you want to make comment?
Thank you. I thought the email with the polling was interesting. Um, and since everybody didn't have access to that, Nancy, I don't know if you can put that on screen share, but there were two separate polls. One of them was, I'm assuming of consumers, would you like to extend the deadline or not? And 76% of people said yes. And then the other poll was of businesses, and only 51% of businesses said they would like to extend the deadline. And I don't know if I like, yeah, that's not effective at all. Um, but basically, there's a graph, and it says, since July 16th, has your business seen an increase in sales Thursday through Sunday? And I think this is important because the, um, intent of the resolution was to increase business downtown. 56% of businesses that were polled, and there were 39 businesses, said no effect. Um, and then there's this little slice of pie that doesn't have a number on it, but I would say maybe about 20% that said they saw a decrease in sales. And then there's also, like, another little slice that says no increase. So I just don't, I mean, I think it's fine to continue, but the intent of the resolution was to increase traffic downtown, um, or increase sales for our businesses. And I don't think that we achieved that.
Any other comments from council?
I have a comment, Mayor. Thank you. Um, I just wanted to maybe, uh, just for the record's sake, uh, when you look at that, um, if you scroll down on that, Nancy, you'll see the, what Councilor Stalder is talking about. And I'm not, maybe I'm missing the part about the, the decrease, but to me, it is not 20%. It's, it's probably in single digits. Uh, um, so I, I just want to make that clear. And then there is also the note of, um, you know, if you, if you were to total them, maybe, maybe 27% to 28% saw an increase, um, in their sales during that time. So I, I think, um, sorry, Mayor, that should be increase in foot traffic, um, during that time. So, you know, I think if you, if you take the 59% or the, in the, the other one, the, um, 56% of, of no change, and then you add to that the, the fact that maybe it's 25% of businesses did see an increase, I think that's well worth continuing. So I just, maybe more than anything, just wanted to correct that the decrease is, to me, doesn't seem like 20%. Though we don't have a number, and that is problematic.
You're probably right on that. Sorry. There was no number, so...
All right, Councilor Pierce?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. And maybe Councilor O'Doherty might want to correct me here, but, but there isn't, uh, and I'm not a survey expert in terms of how to write these questions and, and, and what to compare it to. But the bottom line is, we weren't in this environment last- last year at this time. I'm not sure if this data is compared to the beginning of the pandemic, the middle of the pandemic, where we are today. Bottom line is, we're doing the best we can. And I think it just makes sense to support this. But like I said, I'm not a survey expert, but I think this is a pretty good indication that we're trying, and we want to continue to try for the month of September, so.
Thank you. Counselor O'Doherty.
I was opposed to this amendment initially because, or this resolution when it first came up, mostly because I just don't like having the world circle around alcohol. However, my daughter pointed out that it was kind of blue laws thinking and that people could spill their ice cream on vendors' things outside, you know, for having people put things on the sidewalk, which I was concerned about spilling beers. But you could spill your Coke or you could spill your ice cream just as easily. And I've been down there enough times seeing people just enjoy downtown. And it just, it's to have a sense of community. Like, one person in the family might be holding a beer, but other people are holding other things and babies. And so, I feel like my hesitation initially was unfounded. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Could we have a roll call?
Stalder.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
O'Doherty.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor.
All right, item 14 passes, and that completes the items that we have on our regular agenda. We'll now go back to public comments. And I don't think we have anyone signed up for this, so we'll just ask those to make comments. We'll start with those that are on the phone call. Anyone on the phone that would like to make public comments on this first day of September?
I see no one unmuting or raising.
Anyone in the council chambers like to make public comments? You're welcome to do that again, Mr. Hine. Come forward. He can. Two different.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
All right, Caleb Hine, running for City Council, but, and Honorable Mayor, as well as City Council. The, it seems like it wouldn't be too hard, and I hope to stay out of agenda items. But I keep hearing these certain businesses, and they're very much the same businesses saying that they're not getting whatever survey you're doing. I don't know if Mr. Feazer or someone, whoever's doing, like, the surveys, just include, it's not that hard to include their names and their numbers on there, just of those specific people. And I would clear up a lot of this, you know, businesses not hearing from people for these surveys. It's a couple of numbers, so, just a comment. But, thank you.
All right, good suggestion. Thank you. Anyone else want to make comments during the public comment period? All right, seeing none, we'll close this public comment parade. And now, we'll ask the council if they have any future council work session topics that they would like us to consider. Counselor Pierce.
Yeah, I apologize, Mayor, for going a little bit off topic here, but we do not have another link for our executive session tonight. And I'm wondering if I missed accepting something or if one is going to be sent? Or, and I guess I'm just kind of curious.
Mr. Mayor, there is a link in a calendar invite.
Okay, so, I don't.
I can send it to you, Counselor.
Thank you.
You should have plenty of time to get that link. We'll have a five-minute break. Any other suggestions, Counselor Harrington, for future council work sessions?
Thank you, Mayor. This might also be slightly out of order. I'm curious if I could get, and I can, actually, I will save this for upcoming meetings. I apologize.
Okay. Anyone else want to make suggestions for future council work sessions? All right, seeing none, I'm going to now ask Counselor Pierce to take item number 17.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I did find that link, so thank you very much. We are going to be adjourning to executive session for two reasons tonight. So, let me go forward with our adjournment. I move that we adjourn to executive session regarding land negotiation. It's Wyoming Statute 16-4-405, lowercase a, Roman numeral 7, and litigation 16-4-405, lowercase a, Roman numeral 3.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded as far as to adjourning to executive session. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, we're adjourned, and we'll reconvene for executive session in five minutes. And if you'll use your new Zoom link.